Hey, thank you for checking out the Performance Anxiety Podcast on the Pantheon Podcast Network. I'm your host, Mark, and before we start, I want to thank our sponsor AKG for sending us the Podcaster Essentials Kit. The Liara Mike and headphones are amazing and help me do my podcast. If you've ever thought about your own podcast, check it out and it can help you do yours. This episode gives you two guests in one. The multi-talented Luke Condon joins me. Not only is he part of the band Town Meeting, he's a co-host of the Long May You Young podcast. Luke and I discuss his early musical ventures into rap and being in a band with his brothers, Russ and Babe, and hearing his dad play while my guitar gently weeps while passing gas on the toilet. Luke reveals his best and worst live experiences. We create a new genre of music we call skunk. And we talk a lot about Neil Young because that's the focus of Luke's show on the Pantheon Podcast Network called Long May You Young. And in honor of the show, I create a cocktail that Luke and I named Piss Town. Check out Town Meeting, Luke's solo album, and the Long May You Young podcast. Follow them on social media at Town Meeting Band and at Long May You Young. Follow us at Performance ANX. Support the show at ko-fi.com/performanceanxiety. Merch like shower curtains can be found at performanceanx.threadless.com. Now do what Stephen Stills does and check out Luke Condon of Town Meeting and the Long May You Young podcast on Performance Anxiety, part of the Pantheon Podcast Network. It's gonna take all night. No.
Hey, you're listening to Performance Anxiety. This is guest extraordinaire Luke doing his own intro. And if you want to check out my music, where you can find it at townmeetingmusic.com. He got all in my head.
That's okay, because it froze halfway through.
Oh, perfect. Okay, even better. All right, here we go. Hi, this is Luke Condon from the band Town Meeting and from the podcast Long May You Young. And I am Anxiety. If you want to find my music, you can find it at townmeetingmusic.com. If you want to find the podcast, go to longmayyouyoungpodcast.com. And I also got some solo stuff. Look me up on Spotify. My name is Luke Condon and it's... I make good music and I'm pompous about it and that's how this intro starts.
Let's do one more because it buffered in the middle of it again.
Of course, of course it did.
I may end up stitching like three of these together to make one.
That's fine. All right, here we go. Hey, everybody.
Damn it!
This is my third attempt at the intro.
Let's do a fourth because it just did it again.
Hey, everybody, my name is Luke Condon and I am the guest on this week's Performance Anxiety. And this is my fourth attempt at an intro because it keeps buffering. These are the wonders of Zoom. I'm in the band Town Meeting. Look us up on Spotify. I'm on the podcast Long May You Young. Check us out anywhere you listen to podcasts. I also do a solo music. Look me up, Luke Condon on Spotify everywhere. And this is probably the intro you're getting because this is the one that didn't buffer in the middle of it. So, so check me out. Here is my interview on Performance Anxiety.
So who do we have coming on tonight? Is it just you?
Looks like it's just me, man. I reached out to all the boys and they're all being lame. I reached out to Mike too. Sorry. And even this one, I feel bad. It took me this long. It's just, I'm just so bad at scheduling stuff.
Oh, man, no problem. I reached out to Mike also, but I didn't hear back from him. So we'll see.
Yeah, me neither. Yeah, we'll see.
In honor of having somebody from Long May You Young on, I have made a drink. And I'm not sure what to call it. I'm debating either the Peeshy because the color kind of works there. Performance Anxiety or Piss Town because Performance Anxiety, Peeshy, and Town Meeting. So I'm not...
Ooh, I like all of those. I like Piss Town.
I think I'm going with Piss Town.
Yeah. What's in it?
So cheers. It is, oh, God, it is, okay, started off with some Sprite from Wendy's and a shot of vodka and a shot of tequila.
Okay.
And that tasted terrible. And so I added ginger ale, Canada Dry Bold for flavor and color.
Old faithful over there.
Oh, yeah. You gotta go with the bold, the extra ginger flavor. It gives it that nice urine color.
I love it. I gotta be drinking something now.
Go get something.
I have one sangria and my stupid fridge in here broke like two weeks ago.
Oh, no.
And it, of course, didn't happen like, like I walked in and found it. It's one of those mini fridges.
Yeah.
So the temperature got all screwed up. So the tiny little freezer part of it just like froze and froze and then melted. So just water pouring everywhere, all the beers, room temperature. I was so annoyed. I'm just gonna grab like a bottle and just drink out of the bottle.
Hey, I've got that handy too.
Ooh, a little BT.
Yeah, I love it, man.
All right, I'm covered.
All right, we're back and hydrated.
A sip left of this stuff called bum, it's called, it's bamboo rum.
Oh.
And a coworker turned me on to it. I don't like, I'm not a big rum guy at all, but it's like, I can't explain it. It's really good. It's like delicious. So I think this is supposed to be banana flavored. Like, I don't like banana flavored thing, but I like this, whatever. It's really good mixed with like a Coke or like a whatever, but it's good, just good straight too.
All right, well, at some point we're gonna have to actually get into this podcast, so.
Yes.
I wanted to find out a little bit about the backstory behind Town Meeting.
Okay.
That's, because I feel, I always feel like to know a little bit more about where you are now, we need to go to the beginning.
Sure.
So tell me about your mother. Ooh, that sounded creepy. Never said about that. That was the worst accent ever. I don't know what the hell that was.
I'm from Long May You Young. I'm used to creepy.
Old Silver Gold.
Yeah, so we, I mean, I guess, I'm trying to think of like the very beginning, probably. I mean, me and my brothers have always just sung like ridiculous songs around the house. And then I learned guitar in my mid to late twenties, probably like my mid twenties. Yeah.
Was there any music going on before that? I mean, was it, were you playing something else or was it just starting guitar at that point?
I was rapping.
I heard about this. I was gonna ask you about this.
Yes. As a teenager, you know, like you do what you're influenced by, you know?
Yeah.
And that was the most accessible. So me and, you know, some friends, we would rap. I never really played. We played like two shows like in like upstate New York or something near like his college or whatever. But I always then, you know, end of high school, I went through all my phases and then landed on, you know, folk indie stuff. And then when I learned, so I learned acoustic and that interested me a lot. So I think I started playing live. I don't even know the year, but like it would be like a song in front of a friend's band in a coffee house or something, you know, really scared. And then Russ would play the, he didn't play cojones at the time. He played the, just like a bongo drum. He would just bring a bongo drum and play that. It was very weird. And, but we weren't called Town Meeting. It would just be like Luke is playing some songs and his brother's with them.
Oh, nice. That's what it was, say outside, Luke is playing some songs and his brother's with him.
Exactly, in quotes.
That's the band name.
Exactly. But then, so we played one show and I remember this because it was the day Michael Jackson died. And it was at a martini bar. And we had like, we got booked for a three and a half hour show and it went so awkwardly and terribly like, no one was paying attention. I busted out some rap in the middle of it. It was so weird and uncomfortable for everyone there.
Oh, wow.
I was, I think at that point, I'm like, I think I don't want to do this anymore. I was so, I hated it. And anyways, yeah, so the only cool person was the bartender because we played a brand new song and he's like, ah, brand new's cool. Like, you guys are all right. And I'm like, you literally like saved me from killing myself probably for that comment. I'm kidding. But, so I stopped for a while and then Russ started getting involved with some other local musicians. And they started doing an open mic ironically in a little coffee shop below where that faithful venue.
Wow.
He's like, yeah, he's like, hey, man, I've been doing this. It's fun. You should come. It's a good vibe. He's like, I'll sing with you. I'm like, all right, cool. So we went, I played one song, had a ton of fun, played another and it was great. And then that week, he was supposed to play a three hour gig there with another band of his, like just kind of a thrown together band. And they canceled. And he said, me and you should do it. He's like, we, you know, we, we play it, we've played enough in the past. And he's like, I've been writing, you've been writing a lot. He said, let's just do it. And I was like, all right, fine. And I was so nervous to play this three hour gig for $75 to split with my brother that we went, I remember we went to TGI Fridays beforehand and I did two shots of Jameson. And I had like a, probably like a, like a hard cider or something. I got like really buzzed. Yeah, very loose. Get to the venue and it went awesome. It was so much fun. And we still didn't really have a name at that point, I don't think. Or maybe we had thrown around the name Town Meeting. And I think maybe we're just like, just because that was the last, you know how when you're, you just throw around a million band names? That was just the most recent one?
Yeah.
And we're like, all right, let's, let's go with this. And I can't even remember a lot of the reasons behind it. We, I think we just liked the ring to it.
Okay.
And probably, if I'm being honest, it probably just came because you see Town Meeting. We live in like a small city and I drive through small towns and every, every, every town has a sign, Town Meeting on this date.
Right.
Probably was in our heads.
Oh, wow, okay.
And that gig went so well that the owner was like, hey, can you guys come back next month? I want you back. And we did it and we started building a fan base and adding band members. We got Tim on board. We got Dean at the time. And then eventually my other brother joined us. And it just kind of snowballed upwards in a slow but like fun, good way. And we were having a lot of fun, so.
So did you guys have any musical training as kids? Because the harmonies are fantastic.
Uh, no, we, we didn't, other than just singing in the car, like in the car, singing along to stuff. Our dad was and still is a worship leader at a church.
Okay.
So, you know, so he's very musical. He plays acoustic guitar. He loves to sing, loves the Beatles, obsessed with the Beatles.
Really?
Yeah. He is also obsessed with like old Top 40, I guess on, he's got a subscription to Sirius Radio. And every Saturday morning, they just pick a year and they play old Casey Kasem like Top 40s. And he like upset, like he'll write them down. He loves it.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty wild. He won, actually won a contest on the Beatles channel. He won every Paul McCartney solo vinyl record.
Oh, my.
He's got like, yeah, 40, 40 records. It's pretty cool.
Holy crap. That's amazing.
I know, I stole a few. Don't tell them, but I definitely took RAM from him. Sorry, Dad.
I'm gonna send this podcast directly to him.
Perfect.
So the band isn't all relatives then?
No, and it's gone through a few changes. And right now, it's, it's me, my two brothers, Russell and Brendan. And then we call it three brothers and two others. So, yeah, so it's the three brothers and then my buddy Tim, he's one of my best friends. He started out playing bass for us. I had bought my wife a mandolin for Christmas one year and she just barely touched it. So I brought it to a practice and gave it to Tim who had never touched one and he took to it like wildfire. And then he became our mandolin player, got very proficient in it. And then around the end of 2018, when our electric guitarist left the band and our bass player also left, we got a new bass player and then Tim became the electric player. And now is like one of my favorite electric players of all time. So.
You just hit on something because I love the tone of the electric guitar on the, on the, first of all, the new album. It's just incredible. It's just, it's such a classic tone. I love it.
Yeah. And that's, that's all Tim. He, it's all Tim and also Dan Cardinal of Dimension Sound Studios. He, he did stuff with the Ballroom Thieves. He has Ghost of Paul Revere in there now. He's done stuff with Josh Ritter. And I want to say like Lake Street Dive. I might be, I might be wrong about that. But he's, he's got such a great ear and such a talent for producing and mixing and just like finding the sound you want and giving it to you and also like producing, but not overproducing and not underproducing. And it's such a, it's such a skill and an asset when you're in a time crunch.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, because I mean, you guys don't do month-long sessions in a studio. I mean, you gotta get your, you gotta get your sound down. And somebody who knows how to get your sound out of you and do it proficiently is worth their weight in gold.
And I will say, you know, much to the opposite of every, you know, movie and TV show you've seen that involves bands. That's not real. Like Neil Young, maybe, and like.
The Red and Stones, maybe?
Yeah, of course. But like bands who are recording, it's, you have like, you book as many days as you can afford, which for us, it's like three to five.
Yeah.
And, and then that's it. And, and Dan is worth, Dan is not, he's not the most expensive. He's not the cheapest, but he's worth every penny that we've spent on him. So.
That's.
And I won't tell you how much, but if you want to know, if you're interested, Dimension Sound Studios in Jamaica Plain, Massachusetts.
That was my next question was exactly how much do you spend in the studio?
It's, it's worth it. I'll say that.
So is there a method to the way you guys write the music? Is there a one primary songwriter or are you writing together as a band?
In the beginning, it was just me and then not soon, not long after that, it was me and Russ. By the time we did If I Die, it was pretty much just me and Russ.
Okay.
And then Babe or Brendan, we call him Babe, he would write like, like one or two songs. And by the time we made it like now, we're, we actually just finished recording another, it's like a seven or eight song thing. We're not sure if it's going to be an EP or an album. But at this point, we're all writing, we're all contributing to each other's songs. And it's so much, it's so much harder, but so much more rewarding. So like I'll, like someone, every song is someone's baby.
Oh, yeah.
So for example, we have this new song called Nebula that's going to be on this thing and it's my baby. But I throw it to the band and then they say, this is great. What if we ended it like this? And Tim goes, what if I played a guitar like this? And then Derek, our bass player will be like, what do you think if we change this chord to this? Or how about we just take the break out of it? And we all work on it together. And then sometimes someone's baby will only be like a quarter done or half done. And Russ or me or whoever will be like, hey, I have this song, but I can't get a second verse and I have no idea where to go at this point. And we'll sit down and then like a lot of times, like I'll, I'll say, Russ, I need, I need help with this. And he'll just have me keep playing the first verse over and over again. And he'll sit there with a notebook or writing on his phone. And then he'll be like, what do you think of this? And it's just a fun, it's harder. And it's, we get into like petty arguments and annoying fights a lot, but it's much more rewarding, I think, at the end of the day. Because we're all, we all feel like we're a part of it. And that way, when, you know, the time comes to split the songwriting credit, which doesn't matter for smaller bands, but you never know, like if a song takes off, there's not that like, well, I wrote it and I should get more money. It's just like, no, we all did this. This wouldn't be the same without all of us.
Aside from your short-lived rapping career, was, were there bands before Town Meeting that you were in, that you were part of? Or, because you were, you'd mentioned that your dad is like a minister, but was, was that part of, a big part of your influence growing up? And did that translate into music early on?
Probably a little bit. I think my dad just loving music and playing music all the time. I mean, he, he doesn't care if I share this at this point. Like we would come home from school and we would, the bathroom door would be closed and he'd be playing his guitar, taking a shit. Like he just played his guitar all the time.
Nice.
And we just got used to hearing like, like, while my guitar gently weeps and then a fart. You know what I mean? And it was just like, it was what it was. And we were always singing and, but no real bands before that. I mean, like, I did, I, like I rapped with friends and we called ourselves a rap group. We were called, we were called Humanity Parade at first and then our name became Ant-Eye, but it was Ant-E-Y-E. We thought that was so cool. We thought we were so cool. And then eventually that became Ellipses. And then my rap name was Behold and my partner's rap name was Duplex. And we were so fucking good. I won't lie to you.
Dad, oh, man. I got, I wish I could hear this.
I, it's, it exists somewhere. In fact, you know who has it? And I keep asking him to send it to me, but he hasn't yet, is Nails Lofgren from.
How did Nails get it?
Nails, well, Nails is my best friend.
You know, if, if we speak his name, he's liable to appear.
I, he, I know. He, maybe I'll refer to his, his alter ego, John.
There we go.
But John is, John was my, has been my best friend since seventh grade. And he just, so he's just, was there for all of it, you know?
Oh, wow.
So he's, he's got the files and I don't.
Ah, man. All right, we're gonna have to.
Reach out to him.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Send you some stuff.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna have to put in the podcast if I can. Man.
I, I'm totally cool with it. I have no, I'm not opposed to anything you want to throw in there.
Excellent. All right. Well, we're working on it. How about, do you have any copies of your dad farting while my guitar gently weeps?
I don't. I win.
All right, we may have to doctor that one up a little bit.
That would be easy. I feel like that would be.
How long after you guys started playing together as Town Meeting, did you actually end up recording the first album?
Um, so we did little things, like probably as soon as we could. We went in, in friends' basements. My good friend Joe, who was actually our bassist for a little while, he recorded our quote unquote first EP in his bedroom. It was called Younger and it's like, it's definitely like a rough, thrown together thing. I don't even know if you can find it anywhere. So I'm sure some people have it. We made 500 copies and they're all gone.
Oh, wow. Awesome.
Yeah. And, but it's like, it's but low quality stuff, early songwriting stuff. We did that. We did an album called Verge that we recorded up in some guy's place in New Hampshire. We did another one called, I don't remember, Wooden Bridge. We had all these different ones, but If I Die, I think we had been a band for four years before we did If I Die. And we had just, we had made up our mind like, we gotta stop doing these basement tape things. We have to like spend some money. Crowdfunding was becoming a thing. And so we crowdfunded it and raised the money and, and made it.
So you're saying about four years. I can, I can feel it because you guys have that, that blood harmony going. And that, you know, that you can only get through being related. And I mean, I know a bunch of people spoke about that other podcasts, but specifically Cocaine and Rhinestones. I love that podcast. By the way, you guys turned me on to that, so.
Yeah, they're great.
So I know he speaks about that with Louvin Brothers and the Everly Brothers and you guys nail it. You get these amazing like Eagles type of harmonies in.
I appreciate it.
Especially your If songs, If I Die and If This Were a Movie. Those two specifically off the first album, but I think my favorite off that is Orange and Reds.
Yeah, that's a great one.
That, God, the vocals on that are beautiful.
That's a, that's a Russ baby. And Russ, he also played guitar on that. Like Russ, every like one at one, once per album, I feel like he'll hop on guitar and play a tune. And they're always great. Like I can name you, like If I Die, it was Orange and Reds on All The Bars. He played guitar on Bird and Beast. And then on Make Things Better, he played it on Sometimes The Moon. And they're always kind of similar vibe, but like, like really well-written tunes.
They, yeah, they absolutely are. So you guys, you're playing a lot live, but you guys have full-time jobs, right?
Yeah. Me and Tim do. And then Russ, I think Russ has for a while now. Yeah. And Babe and Derek, I think are part-time. But yeah, I mean, we're all working on this. Yeah.
So you basically have to fit this in while you're working?
Yeah, it sucks.
How hard, is it hard to get everybody's schedule together? Because how many, how many people in the band? Tell five?
There's five of us now. Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, thankfully, like, we're all like, they're pretty, pretty like midweek jobs. I think Derek works weekends. But the rest of us, like, so most of our gigs are on weekends, but like planning a tour is like next to impossible. And it's just, we've, we do it and they're always like mini one-offs, but it's just, you have to use all. My wife isn't psyched because I use all my vacation time for this. Just, but you know, we love doing it and I don't know, that whole myth too of like, you know, just like an over, making it overnight, like that's not real. That's not. Some people, sure. I mean, some people that happens, but 99.7% of bands, you just do this years and then you die, I think.
You just slog it out for a while, ruin a bunch of relationships and then you're dead.
Yeah, exactly. And it doesn't, it doesn't help that like, we're all horrible at committing and, and scheduling. Like, I mean, like, look at this, like, I think you first approached me back in like April and it's mid-August now. And even this, like, I'm like, thank God you sent a reminder this morning because I'm like, oh, that's right. That is today.
Excellent.
And honestly, if it wasn't eight, if we weren't recording at eight, I probably would have had to cancel because today is my son's birthday.
Oh, no.
He's in, he's in bed. He's in bed. So it's totally fine. But like, it's, I, my, my idiot brain can't even remember like important dates. I'm just such a, you know, I have five kids. I get, I get, I get.
I know, I got three, so I, three.
You know.
I love four fingers. I'm an idiot. I know, so you get the parent brain. We'll be right back after a word from our sponsors.
But I definitely like, that's why I did definitely want to come on Performance Anxiety because anxiety and performance are two of my favorite things.
Well, the, the next album, I was listening to that today. I think, I just got a chance to listen to it today. And dude, that is so good. I'm looking, least of these. All The Bars. I love that little background music, the background noises in All The Bars. That, that is so cool. I love little touches like that. It's, it's, it shows that you care about the song. You want, you want an atmosphere.
Yeah, atmosphere. That's a good word. Yeah. No, I appreciate it. That was also done with Dan. So the first album we recorded up in Maine and it was fine. It was, it was a learning experience, but then I think once we found Dan, we kind of found our home. And I am, I'm saying all this, the album we're recording now, or we just recorded, we did not do with Dan. And I feel, it's like bittersweet about it. Like we still are gonna go back with Dan, but we, we've crowdfunded too many times. it's like bittersweet about it. Like, we still are gonna go back with Dan, but we, we've crowdfunded too many times. And so we, we, the studio, we're doing it now, I'm forgetting the name, but it's our buddy Andrew and he, he's also does a great job, so we're- And this one is nice, cause we can slow, we're mixing it ourselves. So he gave, he gave us all the raw recordings and we're gonna- So this one, we actually can kind of treat like everything you see in the movies where we kind of add our convenience, hit it and, but it's, that's all mixing stuff. It's not really recording stuff.
Right. But once you got it done, you, you have, you can do it at your leisure, when you guys have time. You don't have, you're not beholding anybody monetarily or time-wise.
Yeah, but all the, uh, what's the name of it? Oh, From The Green and-
Yeah.
You know, those songs, meeting, that's when we met Dan and kind of fell in love with Dan and his style and, and he, he really helps create that atmosphere for the album and the song especially, so.
Well, Shenandoah, I loved, cause I live in the Shenandoah Valley, so that's got a special meaning to me. Bird and Beast, like you had mentioned, that's a beautiful song. It might be my, one of my favorite off the album.
Nice.
And I have a que, I got a question for you. The new album.
Okay.
The, the new album. And let me, let me pull that up here. Make Things Better.
Yep.
It's awesome. You start off with these big harmonies, but that's not the question I, I have for you, because you consist, you guys consistently do amazing harmonies, consistently keep them fresh. But the sound has kind of progressed a lot over the album.
Yes.
But there's a big change between From The Green to Make Things Better. And I was kind of curious if you've gotten any feedback, because, you know, you've gone from Bird and Beast to Fuck The Man. And for people who may not have seen you guys live or listened to the, your, the Long May You Young podcast, that could possibly be a little startling.
Totally, yeah. So, so no one's come right out and said, I hate this.
Well, that's good.
But, but we, you definitely see fans who were like all in, patrons coming to every show, emailing us constantly, just kind of slowly fizzle out and then just- I don't begrudge them. I mean, we definitely switched. Um, but also, we switched as humans, I think, between those two albums. We switched band members and we switched, we were trying to make hits. We were trying to like, make it. We were aiming songs, we were aiming production. And that's not a negative in itself, but it became a negative for us. We got real burnt out, um, sending hundreds of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, but like just hundreds of emails all over the place. We just really wanted to make it. And so I think our music suffered a little bit. And I don't mean that they're bad albums. I just mean they maybe weren't what they could have been.
It wasn't, maybe it wasn't reflective of you guys as a band.
Yeah. Um, and so, uh, when we reevaluated at the beginning of 2019, we, you know, thought, do we even want to keep doing this? We, there's some inner turmoil, like there always is with bands, especially bands with brothers.
Yeah.
Oasis.
Black Crows.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so it's just like, and, and we kind of worked through some stuff. We had some screaming matches, some a lot of hugging it out and, and then we started just kind of slowly getting back into it. And we, I think we all decided we're not making albums for anyone but ourselves anymore. So if we want to make something harder, we're gonna do it. If we want to make an all acoustic album, we're gonna do it. Which, but it's just what we want to do. And so like songs like Fuck The Man and, uh, the fourth verse and, uh, Answers and these songs that definitely like punch a little bit more and maybe break away from that kind of blue grassy genre.
Yeah.
We were all in. And so was Dan. I think Dan felt that, the, the guy from Dimension and-
Yeah.
I don't know. I, and this new one is, is another different direction. It's hard to explain.
I, I've got a question. Going back to, to, I think it's On The Green, uh, From The Green, sorry.
Yep.
Who is singing the background vocals on Good Enough? It sounds like there's a female vocalist on that.
Yeah.
She's so good.
It's our good friend Jessa Potts.
Oh my gosh, that is such a great addition. I mean, she was, she nailed that.
She's great and she's so, such a unique, uh, style. I don't even know if she's doing music anymore, but I hope she is. Yeah, Boston bass musician, very talented. Yeah, Jessa Potts, shout out to Jessa. If she's still, look her up, if she, see if she's doing music.
I will for sure, cause what she added to that song was great.
Nice, yeah.
And alright, so going, coming back, back around to Make Things Better. The, uh, I think you've written my favorite song of all your songs. It's, is on Make Things Better and it's Forget Me Notz.
I knew it was gonna be Forget Me Notz.
Dude, I love that song. When, when this, that Pray For Rain section starts, I'm getting in my head David Eugene Edwards.
Okay.
Absolutely love 16 Horsepower, Woven Hand, and that's what that whole section reminds me of.
Who is, who is that? I'm sorry.
Oh, David Eugene Edwards is a freak show of a person. He is the weirdest dude on the planet, but he writes the most incredible music. Look up the bands 16 Horsepower.
Okay.
And Woven Hand.
I'm gonna follow them right now on Spotify.
Oh my gosh, they were supposed to-
16 Horsepower?
Yeah, 16 Horsepower put out, uh, I think four albums and then they broke up. And, uh, the lead singer, guitarist, banjo player, accordion player, it was a guy named David Eugene Edwards. And he started this other project that has exploded into a full-fledged band called Woven Hand. And Wove, I, I got to see Woven Hand right before lockdown and, uh, I saw 16 Horsepower three times. And they're, they're a lot more acoustic, folky bass, but it's like American Gothic kind of country. It's freaking creepy stuff. Woven Hand is a lot more electric. And it's, but it's just as freaking creepy.
I just followed both of them on Spotify.
Oh, he is, he like literally gets possessed on stage. It's unreal.
I love it. I love it.
Well, that whole thing culminates in, when you guys do that breakdown at the end, that's what I'm reminded of. That one of my favorite musicians of all time.
Nice. So, oh, I like that. That's cool. I gotta check, I'm, I'm excited to check these guys out. I'm always looking for kind of new music to check out.
This could literally change your songwriting.
Okay.
So-
I like that.
You guys have, have this sound. And it's obviously progressed. This is art. You're gonna get compared to people. Who, who do you hate getting compared to?
See, that's a good, that's a great reverse question of the typical, who do you guys? Sound most like, who do we hate? Oh, this is good, um.
The good thing is like four people listen to this podcast, so. And I think one is, is Shu, so.
Perfect. Uh, I, I think I hate being compared to Mumford and Sons, if I'm being honest.
I was gonna, I kind of figured that. I wasn't gonna say it, but I kind of figured that would be one.
That's the one that always gets brought up. I don't know why at this point, because they've changed so much and so have we, but it's still all the time, Mumford and Sons.
You wrote Fuck The Man about them, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. I, I, them, I don't know, uh, probably the Eagles too.
Yeah. I made that comparison, damn it.
It's been a rough night and I hate the fucking Eagles, man.
I'm not a big fan. I would be happy with like an Eagles Greatest Hits EP I could deal with.
I could be, I could maybe put up with that.
Five, six songs.
I most, it's like, part of me, it's not that I hate them, I just don't enjoy them. I will say the album Hotel California kind of rules. And probably at this point, it's more parody. It's more just me, cause like leaning into it, cause I think it's funny to just hate.
For me, it's nostalgia, because my, my mom used to love them and she listens, she listens to them all the time. And so it's not that I enjoy it, it's just, it puts me in a certain frame of mind, so.
Gotcha. No, totally.
So Eagles and Mumford and Sons, and I can totally get those. I completely understand those because they don't, they suck. And I'm gonna, maybe I should tag Mumford and Sons in this, but-
I'm fine with it.
They, they would never, ever even look at this, god. Alright, so you guys have had the opportunity to share stages with some pretty awesome people. I mean, Willie Nelson, Sturgill Simpson, one of my favorites, Brandy Carlisle. And I may be wrong on this, but the composer of maybe the best song ever, Along December's Adam Duritz.
I thought you are correct about that, yeah.
I think that's been my favorite recurring joke on your podcast is the Long December bit. I'm gonna keep it going too, as much as I can.
I love it. I love it.
So, keeping in mind that you've had, you, you've shared the stages with some pretty big names, some pretty heavy hitters. Can you tell me off the top of your head, because we haven't prepped for this at all, a best live experience and a worst live experience?
Best was probably our Sturgill Simpson show, because that was our first exposure to a, a bigger crowd. And not to toot my own cakeworm, but we, uh, we, we killed it, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
I was waiting for you to say you got a chance to duet with Duritz on Long December, but-
Uh, no, but I'm gonna force my way into that next time we do his underwater sunshine.
You're gonna have to make that happen. And I want to hear it.
Oh, I can't wait. I'm gonna, I'm literally gonna, I'm gonna FaceTime Shu as I'm doing it.
Yeah, yes.
Um, but no, so that's probably the best. I mean, worst, worst live experience, I mean, we've, our old electric guitar guitarist Dean, great guy, talented guy, used to play with Jonathan Edwards and Tom Rush and, and all these kind of. But he would say, like, if, if there was like a particularly bad gig or rough gig and we were all complaining about it and we'd ask Dean, he'd go, you know, I've played a lot of gigs and that was one of them. I can't, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head that, we've been asked to play some weddings and some of them have been awesome, like really cool. And some of them are really rough, cause we're not a wedding band.
Yeah.
Um, but those don't really count. I, I guess, uh-
A lot of times when I ask this, I end up hearing about technical issues that just kind of derail an entire-
Part of it, yeah.
Yes. I mean, it's, and you guys, you don't have all kinds of backups at the ready. So that's, that can be, you know, harrowing if you have a technical issue.
So, uh, beginning of 2020, we did a run, a little mini run. And we did Texas, we did Colorado, but we had two back-to-back shows in Colorado, which was very dumb. Uh, we played in Denver and then Colorado Springs, which is in two, an hour, two hours away from Denver.
Okay.
And for a band, a smaller band from Massachusetts, that is foolish.
Really?
Denver show, small to mid-sized venue, uh, almost sold out, like great crowd.
Nice.
Tons of people came out, had a blast. And then Colorado Springs the next night, instead of a small to mid-sized venue, it was a theater that we had somehow booked.
Oh, wow.
And two tickets were sold. Two tickets. And one of them didn't even show up. And it was so uncomfortable and awkward. So I could, so as far as like good and bad, right, you know, neck and back-to-back with each other, I would, I would put those right up there.
Wow, that's a high and a low, right? One right after the other. Oh my gosh, that sucks.
I will say probably one of the better shows we played in, in a while was right up in Maine. Last weekend, we played at, uh, Maine Craft Distilling, which put up a, like a stage. They got like a 300 capacity venue now, it's outdoors. And we, there's a, a keyboardist, this guy Ben Cosgrove, he writes his own instrumental music, one of the most talented guys I've ever met, hilarious dude. Uh, we vibed really well. But he played with us and he's gonna probably play with us on some gigs coming up. But having keys in the mix was like transcendental. It was, it was incredible. So we did Forget Me Notz with like organ, dude.
Nice.
You would have been pumped.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
So what's, what's, uh, playing live like for you guys at this point? I mean, do you have, things are kind of still up in the air, aren't they?
Yeah, it's, everything is fraught with anxiety, as it typically is anyway, but, uh, we were late to the party to book anything, any kind of a tour. We had high hopes to run down, actually towards your neck of the woods and then all the way down to Asheville.
Oh, wow.
And, but everyone, you have to do that, to do that in November, you have to book it in March, you know? And it's, so like, now they're all booked, but now everyone's like, are these gonna happen? So we're, uh, we're hoping like probably spring, we'll, we'll try to do some kind of a run down the East Coast and we'll hit New York, we'll try to hit Philly, we'll, but it's just, it's so, it's just tricky. We do all our own booking, which, not by choice.
Yeah. You do more than just a band. You are also the proud owner, co-owner of a podcast. Long May You Young.
Yes.
And I discovered you guys, cause we joined this, the Pantheon Podcast Network about the same time.
Yes.
And I remember looking, I'm doing research before joining and I think you guys had just joined. And I was like, okay, Long May, let me, let me check these guys out. And you'd only done like four or five episodes at that point.
Yeah.
And I listened and I thought, these guys are fucking hilarious. You, seriously, Long May You Young is the reason I was like, alright, I'm in, I'm in Pantheon. I'm, I'm good.
Nice. Okay, that's cool. It's funny, man.
And I've grown to, to listen, had the chance to listen to more, obviously, since, cause it's been, what, a little over a year now. But there's some great ones, like obviously Long May You Young, Highway Hi-Fi, I like, those guys are hilarious. They're so dry.
Highway Hi, I don't think I, I don't think I know though. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta dip back in. I like, I just, uh, I started listening to mu, forcing myself to listen to music again and then like, I dipped out of podcasts, except for like my old faithfuls.
Yeah.
But I gotta get, I gotta get into some new ones, cause I'm, I'm starting to dry up, so.
With my job, I gotta, I gotta listen to some comedy, otherwise I will probably go-
Hell, yeah.
Postal and just murder everybody. Not murder, um, maybe harm.
Yeah.
But that's, that's why I love Long May You Young, because first of all, you're talking about one of my favorite subjects, Neil Young.
Yep.
And you guys are hilarious.
I thought you were gonna say one of my favorite subjects, penis.
Semen. That's one of my favorite subjects. I can't get enough.
Alright, so you, so you were Neil, you, you've been a Neil fan?
Yes, probably.
Okay.
Since the early 90s. I got, for me, I think I got into him late, but, uh, and it was weird, cause I was listening to, or reading an article or something, cause there were no podcasts at this point. It was probably 91, 92. And I think it was something about the Smashing Pumpkins and they, they're, Billy Corgan was talking about Neil Young and how one of the things that drew him into guitar was hearing Neil Young's one-note guitar solo on Cinnamon Girl. And I'm like, one-note guitar solo? What?
Yeah.
What the hell does he mean? But what, and so I'm like, alright, well, I, I know, you know, Neil's been around forever. I'm gonna go get, Everybody Knows This Is Nowhere. And I was hooked from then on. I mean, cause I remember hearing, you know, the hits, the Harvest stuff. And thinking, you know, it's good, it's really, but you know, and I was more into noise. Smashing Pumpkins, you know, their noisy stuff, early noisy stuff. And so I'm like, alright, well, let me give this a shot. And that was, I, I heard that and I'm like, damn, I'm, I'm hooked on Neil, so.
Yeah, man.
So I've just-
That album, great.
Yeah, but I've just kind of skipped around. I haven't gone like, I'm gonna get Everybody Knows This Is Nowhere, then after The Gold Rush, then Harv, I'm not, I just kind of like, Everybody Knows This Is Nowhere, then Sleeps With Angels and then Live Rust and then-
Sure, yeah.
Ragged Glory. So I've, I've just kind of skipped around. And I actually, one of the, I remember when Rust, not Rust, Life got released on CD for the first time, I was like, I gotta get it. And I listened to it and I'm like, ooh. I love Inca Queen.
Yeah.
But that's about it off that album. I was, ah.
Yeah.
And so when you guys go through and you're honest about the, the music, that's really one of the things that endeared me is that you guys aren't just sitting there, you know, virtually jerking Neil off. You, you actually talking about the albums.
Oh, I'm gonna be honest about Chrome Dreams 2 on our next episode too, I'm not gonna lie to you. I got some things to say about Chrome Dreams 2.
So how did-
Whenever we finally get to record that episode.
I know, I've been waiting. You guys are on like a, every third week now.
I know. We just got, summer just got so crazy for everyone and, uh, and it's, I'm hoping once September hits- I know, we just got, summer just got so crazy for everyone and, uh, and it's, I'm hoping once September hits, I'm going to a shit ton of shows in September, but I'm hoping, like even in between those, I think just, once your kids are on a schedule, it forces you to get on a schedule, and I think that will help. Because right now, we're like, someone's on vacation this week and there's a wedding and there's this, and we're playing both nights this weekend, so.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I think this Wednesday, not a week from today, when we're recording this on a Wednesday, a week from today, whenever we're recording this, I think we'll have another episode, I think.
Well, you'll definitely have it out because this will take several weeks to come out.
Okay.
So I'm gonna like, honestly, I'm on like a six to eight week lead at this point. I have so many freaking ones in the, in the queue, it's ridiculous.
I'm always fascinated by people who are prepared for things.
It's crazy. It's not even that I'm prepared. It's, I got so freaking lucky with this podcast. I got hooked up with like three different PR firms pretty early on, and they just feed me all kinds of people. It's just, it's crazy. Like I, I've had weeks where I've recorded three or four episodes, but I only used to release one a week.
Yeah.
I, my lead time ballooned to like eight weeks, and I hate that.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, I want it to be like four weeks.
Four weeks would be great. I mean, any weeks, when I first started, I was so like, we didn't, nothing going on, it's the beginning of a pandemic. And I was so dedicated to like, I wanna like be able to like backlog a few of these in case we need a break and.
Yeah.
And then even like, you know, especially when the, the winter and it got even more dismal, and I remember like texting Mike and Russ, I'm like, I'm motivated, I'm gonna get a sponsors, I'm gonna like send emails, and then now I'm just like, you guys wanna record? It's been like a month. It's kinda where we're at, so. It's a, it's time-consuming. People don't get it, like even like our like sham together podcasts, like it still like takes time to edit and just like throw in little shit, and you can tell the ones that I, I, I made an effort to, because I'll throw in little like noises.
Yes.
And like Dan Moshpit shit.
I love Dan Moshpit.
Oh, can't go, can't go wrong with Dan Moshpit.
No.
But yeah, but so, but like, but sometimes I'm just like, I'm like, okay, theme song, alright, skip ahead. I know there was dead space, I'm just leaving them all in. But what's nice, so what's nice, and you get this as the, as the one-man guy who does the whole thing and edits, like, why, the advantage I have over Mike and Russ is because I'm editing. If I like make a shitty joke or something that makes me sound stupid, I can cut that right out.
Oh, yeah. Something that falls flat, it's out.
I'm gonna leave theirs in.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm gonna edit mine out.
How did you guys get that started? How did you hook up with Mike Shu? And how did you guys come up with the idea of doing an entire podcast about Neil Young's discography, album by album, track by track?
It's another way I just sound old to my children is like, you guys don't understand what it was like, but like I think I held out from getting Spotify for a long time because of how much it sucks for artists, but then eventually I just caved. But, uh, but, but it's really like, if I have it, I'm gonna take advantage of it. So like the fact that I can just like, like the fact that you can, you can just do that with any artist, you could just listen to all of their albums in order, it, it's amazing. And so with Neil, I, I've always loved Neil, but never really dove deep. And then we were talking to Mike, me and Russ were talking to Mike on, um, his other podcast, Breaking the Ice. And, uh, we just got talking about Neil, and then we just started ranting about Neil together, and, uh, he, he messaged me on Instagram and he goes, we should definitely start a Neil Young podcast. And he probably was saying it like, just like in it, like joking, and then I'm like, okay, and I sent him like a three-page itinerary of how we were gonna do it. And he's like, oh, alright, well then I guess we're gonna do this. So we had a Zoom meeting just to make sure we would vibe, and we did, and and then like very first episode, we just kinda hit it off and now Mike's one of my good friends, and so it's pretty cool.
Oh, yeah. And Mike's been on the show a couple of times too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's, he's hilarious, he kills me.
He's so funny. He's got that deep radio voice too. It's, it's like sexy. Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm never, there's only a few people that I'm vocally envious of. My voice is garbage. I, I hate.
I, so I hate editing podcasts is I hate listening to myself. I'm so, I hate it.
Me too, but Mike, man, Mike and Mark Lanigan are like the two voices. If I could pick one, it'd be one of those guys.
Yeah. Who's Mark Lanigan? Why do I know that name?
Screaming Trees, Queens of the Stone Age.
Queens, that.
My 100th episode.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
You get some names, man.
I tried.
How do you do it? Do you, are you just, you're just persistent?
At times, yeah. With, with Mark, it was a progression. I had had, so I had Black Rebel Motorcycle Club on, Leah and Pete from BRMC. Then I started getting people around them in their orbit on, like this guy named Ian Otway.
Okay.
And a guy named Matt Boroff, and they're musicians themselves, and they had some excellent albums. And my 100th episode was coming up, I was like 10 episodes away from recording it, and I'm like, I wanna do something big for number 100. And I, and I had Ian on re, pretty recently after that, and, oh, no, no, it was Matt Boroff, and I'm like, he had mentioned working with him, so I was like, hey, you know, I don't normally like to ask guests, former guests favors or anything like that, but you think Mark Lanigan would be interested in doing my 100th episode? And he's like, he might, he's really cool. Like, I'll tell you what, I'll float it to him. If he's interested, I'll connect you guys.
Yeah.
I was like, sure. And he, like a week or two later, he said, yeah, Mark's down. So I'm like.
Oh, that's awesome.
Fucking awesome. He was about to release a book, so, uh, you know.
Oh, nice. Alright, let me, so let me ask you this. Who's your, uh, who's your Mount Everest?
Uh, Jimmy Page.
Jimmy Page, okay.
I had his girlfriend on and his daughter.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe one of these days, but, uh, Scarlett Sabette, a few episodes ago, is, is, she actually, she's been on twice now. The first time we recorded right before Mark Lanigan, like, like three or four episodes before Mark Lanigan. And, um, she reached out to me like literally a year later, and she's like, do you mind if we take that down?
Oh, really?
Uh, oh, oh, okay. Uh, sure. If somebody, I'm not gonna say no, if, you know, if a guest wants me to take it down, I'll take it down.
Yeah, sure.
And I'm like, okay, and I didn't realize it was before Mark Lanigan. So I'm like, alright, is there any reason, reason why? She's like, I wanna do it again, I wanna redo it. I think we can do it much better. I'm like, oh. Sure.
There you go.
No problem.
Perfect.
But I didn't real, I didn't think about it, so I took it down, and then I looked, I'm like, shit, now that makes Mark Lanigan episode 99.
Oh, no.
And, and all I do is like half the episodes, me just saying, thanking him for being like my, well, not half, but you know, it's me thanking him for being my 100th episode, so. But I don't think anybody's actually gonna count, so.
Well, now I'm gonna. I'm gonna bring it up on the next Long May You Young.
So I re-released it a few weeks ago, and, uh, but the amazing thing is Jimmy Page is like my idol. I grew up worshiping Jimmy Page, Led Zeppelin, his solo stuff, Page, anything. And so for her podcast, I was like, do you think Jimmy would mind if I used some of his music from this, his soundtracks he did? Because he did a soundtrack for Kenneth Anger film called Lucifer Rising, and he did the soundtrack for, uh, Death Wish. He did the soundtrack to Death Wish 2, so.
Did he really?
Yeah, it's all Jimmy.
I've never seen Death Wish 2.
So like, do you think he'd mind if I use, I'm thinking more Lucifer Rising. She's like, I'll check. So she's like, she comes back to me like the next day, she's like, I asked Jimmy, yeah, he said it's fine, no problem. He listened to the podcast, he said, yeah, that'd be great.
He listened to the podcast? That's awesome.
So.
Oh, that's, that's wild.
When I released it, he put it in his Instagram story, and I screenshotted it, saved it, yeah.
Oh, dude, that's so cool, man.
So, maybe one of these days I'll be able to get him on, but, um,
Yeah.
I don't wanna ask him anything about Led Zeppelin, because what's he gonna tell me that he hasn't already told 100,000 other people?
Right, right.
I wanna know more about his time after Led Zeppelin, with the firm, and the stuff he did with the guys from Yes, and, uh, the soundtracks. So that's what I wanna know about, so.
Yeah.
So if Jimmy, you're listening, let's, let's do this.
Do it, Jimmy.
But yeah, Jimmy, and then David Eugene Edwards. If I could get David Eugene Edwards on, I would be, that'd be amazing, just because I think I've seen two interviews by him in 20 years.
Yeah.
So that would be, those are two of my Mount Rushmore's. But you guys do interviews now. Kooch.
Here and there, yeah.
Kooch is one of my favorites, man. Koochmar, man, that was, that was the most awkward interview I think I've ever heard.
Yeah, it's fucking Mike, he just starts it out with like the weirdest question ever.
I wish I had the balls to do that half the time.
Me too, me too. I got so nervous, and then afterwards, I'm like, why did I get nervous? I don't know this guy, like.
You're not gonna talk to him afterwards.
Yeah.
Now, now, before we get into Landing on Water, I just wanna preface this, just to be completely transparent and upfront with you, and I can't speak for Luke or Russ, this is Mike.
Okay.
Up to this point in our podcast, this is what, in my humble opinion, Neil Young's worst album. And I just wanna put that up front, because I don't wanna be like, oh yeah, everything's great and everything. I just want you to know where I'm coming from. I just think that it, it's just, it's, although I've warmed up to it over the years, especially the last three songs on the album, which is, I got a problem, pressure and drifter, I believe.
Well, I'd have to say to you in response to that right away, I'd have to say that Neil does not care.
Yes.
To start off with, I think you did the worst Neil Young album ever. Okay.
But he, he had to at that point because he had been shitting on it for 30 episodes at that point.
He paid himself into a corner on that one, for sure.
Yeah, he did. Uh, so funny.
So I really like that you guys have expanded into having people associated with the Neil albums on. I, I think that was, that's a great move.
Yeah, I, and, and pretty much anyone who wants to talk about Neil, like, I mean, not like, not anyone. But like, but like if like, uh, like I'd love to talk to Margot Price, she's definitely on my list, or like, uh, Taylor or Griff from Dawes. And then Neil Young himself is probably obviously our, our guy, so.
Yeah, exactly. So has the, your, your love for Neil grown or decreased since you guys listen to him all the time now?
Uh, increased exponentially.
Wow.
Um, and I think going through the, like, the 80s, like the rougher albums, and then coming out and this podcast exposed me to 90s Neil. Like I was very unfamiliar with Broken Arrow and Sleeps With Angels and Greendale.
So you, you love, you're a big fan of 90s Neil now?
I, yeah, and, and I love it all. I love the good, the bad, and I've been through it. I feel like I've fought wars with, with Neil's albums, and I feel like I, I came out better for it, and we're still not done, like mid, the mid-aughts aren't necessarily my favorite, but he's got some, some quiet gems in there. And then I can't wait to get to like Psychedelic Pill.
Oh, that's the only time I've seen Neil live was with, on the Psychedelic, Psychedelic Pill tour.
Yeah, a lot of people, but you know.
I don't want it to end. I want you guys to keep going. I mean, is there any plans to do any offshoots, like, uh, like he did, there's that Four Way Street album, or he's appeared on some Just Crazy Horse albums. Are any plans to do anything like that?
I think we'll keep doing this for a while. We have, we have too much fun. Um, I think stretching them in the summer is like kind of a necessary, like, let's like make sure this isn't work, because we're not getting paid for it, you know what I mean? So let's make sure we're still having fun, and then.
Pantheon's not paying you guys?
No, they're, they're paying, are they paying you?
Let me, let me talk to Peter about that.
Alright. But yeah, so I, I think like.
I'll be getting paid for dick pills pretty soon. I agreed to do those, so.
We would have, but I was so burnt out. I'm like, I don't wanna, I don't even wanna commit to anything, because I just don't. I don't know. We did the AKG thing, whatever, we don't need to get into this, but yeah, so with, he still has so many albums. We're still, we still have so much to do, and we'll do more interviews. Like I, I'm trying as hard as I can to get Margot Price, or one of the dudes from Dawes, or the Avits, or anyone who wants to talk about Neil, like in, and then like people who, you know, I'd love to talk to Tweety. I've reached out to his people, but got nothing.
Well, you guys had Patterson Hood on.
Patterson was like a no-brainer, because, I mean, if you're doing a Neil Young podcast, you gotta talk to one of the drive-bys.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, and so he was.
It's gotta be him or Cooley, that's it.
Yeah, and I, so when I reached out to like, when I reach out to people, like it's usually like, oh, I'm fingers crossed, I hope maybe they'll even respond. And then with, but when I reach out to Patterson's manager, I'm like, this is gonna be a yes. And it was within five minutes, like, yeah, he wants to do it, and when can you do it?
Nice.
Alright, yeah, we're.
Has there been a Neil Young album that's grown on you, that you thought that you used to hate?
Yeah.
Like a fungus.
A couple of them, a couple of them, but I will say Landing on Water gets better the more I listen to it.
Wow, Shu's gonna hate you.
I like, I know, and I like, I kinda wanna have Kooch back on and tell him like, hey, man, we were wrong.
That would be awesome. I would love it. Oh my.
So ridiculous.
That and the characters you guys have come up with, you know, David Briggs' shoe, Old Silvergold, Nails Lofgren, Titty Bird.
The jacket.
The ja, oh dude, I love the jacket. The jacket is, but I think my favorite part is the theme song. You guys have literally written the best theme song in podcast-dom.
That's aw, if, if Neil Young himself, Reese Stone said, I hate your podcast, you guys are idiots, and you're wrong, and you're vulgar, and you're terrible, but I love your theme song, I would literally die a happy man. That's all I cared, that's all I would care about.
You guys, I always look forward to the new Long May You Youngs, and I'm really digging the albums.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think you're gonna like this new one. Again, it's much different. We have, uh, we did something different this time. It's.
You went ska funk.
Yes, we went, it's called Skunk.
Why the hell didn't I see that one coming? Oh my gosh.
But, but there will be horns on this album.
Interesting.
Like light, but, uh, so I'll, we did a thing where we did a song in the beginning, like a group song, a group song at the end. The group song at the end is 13 minutes long. It's just a jam, fucking nice jam.
I didn't even talk about the live album you guys just put out.
Oh, yeah. I don't remember that one.
I'm gonna tell you, that's, you guys did something that not a lot of people do, so it's kinda brave, is you put out a live album with no overdubs, no corrections, it's just basically straight off the board. Everybody, not just me, can hear you guys sing, you know, can I get this in the monitor? Can I get all the corrections? It's really wild. It's, it's, you know, like a real concert experience. I, I loved it.
Thank you, yeah. It's, uh, it's fun, man. It's, and I think we're gonna try to do more of that, like a lot of these guys, like the engineers who are running it, they'll do board mixes anyway. And someone was just like, hey, I'd record it if you want it, and Tim, Timmy is a huge Dead guy, loves Phish. And so he loves that bootleggy sound, so he's, I think he actually bought a little mini recorder that he's just bringing to shows and trying to figure out where to put it so he can get the best sound.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so we're gonna, I, we're gonna try to do more, because I, there's nothing like that, like capturing live shit. And also like, we're trying to take a lesson from Neil's book, just get everything, record everything.
Yes, yes. So I'm looking at Dirty Old Demon, West of Seattle, those are just awesome versions on the, on the live album. And you guys do a great version of Down By The River.
Yeah.
Which is fantastic. And Fire On The Mountain. I'm not a big Dead fan. I've.
Yeah.
But, but I like your version of it. I, I kinda like the Dead's version of it too. I'm not a, I don't like the Grateful Dead at all. But it's a, it's a really excellent version of it. I've really, I kinda got into it.
Thank you, yeah. I'm not a huge Dead guy either, but I'll, I'm into anything where the band, where we can lock in and like find our own rhythm and like vibe off each other. I just like that. So we have that end song that's 13 minutes, and it's called something else, and Russ wrote it, but it's really just, uh, it's a 13-minute jam in E with a few like breaks for some vocals, but it's,
Nice.
We recorded it in one take and just like went off on each other, and we're gonna overdub like some fun stuff on this. We're just gonna get friends. We're gonna send them the track and just be like, do whatever you want on this, and we'll use what we like, but.
Did you go over to some nails? Nails Lofgren?
Maybe. But the, uh, but the album's gonna be called A Boy, A Bear, A Beast, A Bone, A Mouse.
Interesting.
Yes, so, and you can read into that however you want. Those are our nicknames in the band, so that's where that came from.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna tell anyone who, who anyone's nickname is, that's totally up for everyone to guess.
You know, to get a clue, go back and listen to Long May You Young, because I think you mentioned a couple of them a few episodes ago.
Probably, it probably slips out.
Yeah, so if anybody's interested, go back and listen to Long May, in fact, go listen to Long May You Young anyway, because it's freaking hilarious.
It's, uh, yeah, it's fun. We have fun.
So where, where can people find a band? Where can they get the music? And how, where can they follow the podcast? Tell me all the socials, how, how people can keep up with what you're doing.
So, uh, for Town Meeting, go on any social media platform and type in Town Meeting Band or Town Meeting Music, you'll find us. Our website is townmeetingmusic.com, and we're all over everything. Uh, we're trying to stay up to date on our website, but we're very forgetful and whatever, but, but it's there, and there's stuff on there for you to check out. And then for the podcast, same thing. If you type in Long May You Young Podcast, you'll find us wherever you listen to podcasts, and yeah, and we have a website too called, uh, longmayyouyoungpodcast.com. We've got merch, we've got hats and all kinds of goodies, t-shirts, I think, stickers, I think, so.
I'll have to swap you some merch. All mine's through Threadless, so it's like one-off printing, but I can get you a shower curtain if you want with my logo on it.
Oh, do you do shower curtains? That rules, man.
I do, I got a shower curtain.
Oh, that's awesome. I'll take a shower curtain. You send us a shower curtain, we'll send you a shirt and a hat.
Alright, I gotta, I gotta look that up. I gotta remember how much they cost. I don't remember how much shower curtains cost. But it's, it's my big stupid ass, actually, I don't wanna say stupid ass, because I love the logo. The guy who did it for me did Soundguard's Bad Motor Finger too.
Oh, that rules, yeah.
He was my second podcast, Mark, the guy named Mark Dancy, freaking awesome dude. And, uh, I'm, I'm taking, I'm here trying to get your stuff, I'm hawking my. And uh, I'm, I'm taking, I'm here trying to get your stuff, I'm hawking my merch, ridiculous, but thank you. I mean, I really appreciate this, this has been a blast, it's been awesome, you know, finally-
It's fun, man.
Finally talking to you, doing a podcast together, and.
Yeah.
If we can get somebody on, we would, maybe do another Neil Young podcast, either with you guys, either with Long May You Young, or Through Performance Anxiety, one or the other, we'll get a Neil.
Yeah, of course, what's your Neil album, if, if there's one we haven't done yet, what's your go-to album?
Oh, my, my go-to, you've already done, it's On The Beach.
On The Beach, okay.
But I do like Psychedelic Pill a lot.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm excited to hear that one. Or conversely, I was incredibly disappointed in Americana.
Okay, that would be interesting.
So.
I think I liked Americana, but it's been so long, so we'll, we'll see.
I was hoping for more crazy horse sounds coming out of Americana than I got. It, a lot of it's-
We're creeping up to it.
Yeah, a lot of it sounded like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Not, not, not faithful to the originals necessarily, but it wasn't as bombastic as I had hoped it would be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Well, I finished my Piss Town, or whatever, whatever the name was.
That's dumb, it's great.
It's great to finally meet you and talk to you.